Good evening. It is Thursday, August 25th, 2022, and the time is 6:00 PM. Calling to order our city council meeting, we will have an invocation by Vice Mayor Seville. And Pledge of Legions, please rise if you wish.
Heavenly Father, we're just thankful that we can come together tonight as a group and look at the business of our community and do what's best for the residents in our community and the lives they are able to live and their families can just enjoy this community. And Lord, we're thankful for the employees we have. We ask that you watch over them and their families. And Lord, we ask that you watch out for our military, whether they're here or afar, and be with their families and comfort them, Lord. And Lord, we know there's a lot of people suffering. We know their difficult times. And I know that we're all just richly blessed. And Lord, we just pray that you watch over those that have less fortune than us. And Lord, I just pray that you be with all of our employees and keep them safe.
Amen.
The Pledge of Legions to defy the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a special presentation this evening. This is crossing guard Denise. She was born and raised in St. Louis, Missouri, and in 1978 Denise moved to Pinellas County and has lived here ever since. Denise was hired in August 13th of 1997 and has been a school crossing guard ever since. Denise enjoys fishing, boating, painting, and spending time with her family, who are in the back row over there. Denise is married with one son and one granddaughter. We asked her if there was anything else that she would like to be known for, and she says the fact that she hates snow. So that's the reason why you moved here from Missouri, huh? We want to thank Denise for all of her hard work and a quarter of a century dedication to the city of Pinellas Park and its children and parents for serving along the sides of the roads to protect the children to make sure that they got an education on how to safely cross the road. We want to thank you for your dedication and hard work that makes the citizens look very favorably upon us. Congratulations on 25 years of service.
We have a 25-year server pin there.
We present this plaque to Denise in appreciation and recognition of 25 years of continuous and loyal service as of the 13th day of August of 2022. And also in this envelope is a little kind of catalog that you can go through and pick some goodies from.
Thank you.
And we're going to take a picture, and we want the family to come up and get a picture as well.
Chief, would you like to add anything else?
You know, Ms. Quonzer has been with us for 25 years, and the idea that, you know, you talk about what our crossing guards do every day for our community. And the idea that rain or shine, cold or hot, doesn't matter. She comes to work every day with a smile on her face. And it doesn't matter whether or not we're doing school crossing duties or we're doing our annual parade, right? You can always count on her to be here for the citizens, and for that, I am incredibly grateful. I'm happy to know you. I'm glad we've worked together, and congratulations on 25 years.
That would probably be appropriate.
I say the whole city council thanks you very much.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. All righty, we have the video ready for the chamber this evening. Are they going to do it inside? Yep, okay. There we go.
My name is Dr. Daniel Strauss. I'm the president of the Pinellas Park Gateway Chamber of Commerce. The Pinellas Park Gateway Chamber of Commerce was founded in 1912. It's an organization that helps to support local businesses through a lot of activities, a lot of networking, a lot of resources that we provide to them to help them succeed. We do a lot of activities within the community to help to support networking for local businesses and get our local business names out there. Any organization such as a Chamber of Commerce is about being able to extend your reach into the community, into the business community, as well as the outside community. For me personally, to be involved in the Pinellas Park Gateway Chamber of Commerce goes beyond that. It affords me the opportunity to get out and do some tremendous community service, which is what the roots of our Chamber of Commerce, I believe, are.
The Chamber offers many events. We have small events, up to large events, but we have a lot of annual events. So we have our monthly breakfast, which is held at the Senior Center here in Pinellas Park. We also have the PPMB, the Pinellas Park Medical District, so that is usually over SPC once a month. And we have our Monday Night Mingle, so that is actually another one we do once a month. But our annual events, we do the Back to School Backpack Drive. We also do the Treat You Can Trust with the City. We do free gift wrapping for people that would like to come and do donations. We also have our trade show inside of the country in the park, so we actually are able to showcase all of our members at the trade show that sign up to be part of it. So if a business would like to become a member, it's fairly simple. They have basically two options. One, they can go to our website, www.panalisparkchamber.com. If they don't want to go on the website and do it, they can come right into the building and sign up. The Chamber of Commerce is located in Pinellas Park at 5851 Park Boulevard in Park Station. So what makes the Pinellas Park Gateway Chamber of Commerce different than other organizations similar to us would be our strong ties to not only the community, but the city. We don't work as two separate entities. We try to work together.
Gateway Chamber, really for us, allows us to reach out and talk directly to our businesses. What it does for us on the city's standpoint is it attaches the city. So literally, you're getting me, you're getting economic development, you're getting the building department, you're getting the police department, you're getting the fire department. So the thing for the city is our teamwork with the Gateway Chamber is that connection. They know a face, they know a person, they know who to talk to and who to reach out to. I would say probably the biggest success story is something I'm going to talk about all the time. It's literally that network. So you take 100 members of your business community and you come in there, and by advertising with the Chamber, you're able to get your name out there. A lot of the Chamber members become literally this tight network of friends, and so when they can, they hire each other. Whether you're here or you're outside the city, this Chamber provides something that I think is very unique to Pinellas Park.
Thank you for that. We appreciate it. But I do think that our Chamber and city work very uniquely together to help each other out. The Chamber members help the city out and promote the city, and vice versa, the city. You can go onto our website, click, and it'll take you over to the Chamber's website so that you can see all the wonderful businesses that are in our community. Next up, we offer the citizens to come up and speak for three minutes on anything that is not on the agenda this evening. And I do have Mr. Stephen Goulet, who would like to come up and speak. Name and address for the record, please.
Stephane Goulet, Peel Box 965, Pinellas Park, Florida, 33780-0965. Can you hear me? I'll be sure to find where we're going to the same club. We've been a resident for 41 years. But they keep, when the fence is in disrepair, I got some pictures we got after the meeting. When they blew the parking lot, they blew into our neighborhood, into our properties. And also, there's been shrubs and trash been there for a couple of weeks. They never picked it up. So that's just my only issue there. I got some pictures. I won't take much of your time. I can show up to the meeting. And also, I want to thank Jay Blumer. Last Monday, August 25th, Jay Blumer, because he has some rental properties, says, "Stephan, there's kids on the rooftop of your property." I'm like, "What?" So I said, "I'll be right over," or tenant. So I appreciate Jay Blumer for what he did. Aside being a neighborhood service, he's also a neighborhood watch. So I appreciate what he did, and I thank him. I called my tenant. I said, "There's children on the rooftop of the house." He called me a liar. I said, "No problem. Well, call Jay Blumer for yourself." So I gave his phone number, and I like what he says. Says, "I like what he told my tenant. Says, 'Children's got children on the rooftop of the house.'" And they shouldn't be there, first of all. So I want to thank Jay Blumer for giving me a heads up, for letting me know. I'm done. And just if you want to see the picture after the meeting, I can show you where we're going to the same club. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to come up and speak on any item that's not on our agenda this evening? Seeing none. Moving on to Section 2. Oh, excuse me. Before that, we do have some items that are quasi judicial. So if there is anybody that would like to speak on a quasi judicial item, please stand and be sworn in.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. Now, moving on to approval of minutes, Section 2. Councilmember Butler?
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the regular council minutes of August 9th, 2022, as on file in the City Clerk's office.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion by city council on this item? Anybody in the audience that has any questions about this? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Section 3, Public Hearing, Item P1, Ordinance Number 4167.
Mayor, Item P1 is ordinance number 4167. Your staff discovered today that even though the county GIs system says that parcel involved in that ordinance is all B1, it's also, part of it is also R6, and that's going to necessitate the ordinance being amended in the title and the body that your staff has prepared the amendment that's before you tonight. And I would suggest that if you concur that there be a motion in the second to consider amending the ordinance at this time to be the new version that's before you so that it can be re-noticed and then will come for you for advertised public hearing at a subsequent meeting. The applicant has been advised and is filed with them.
Thank you.
More motion?
Yes.
As to ordinance number 4167, I move that we allow the amendment of the ordinance as requested by our staff and before us tonight to include in both the title and the body of the ordinance the reference that the property actually has two different zoning classifications, B1 and R6, and that such ordinance be considered amended as of this date and rescheduled for a second reading and second public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to Section 2, or Item P2, Ordinance Number 4168.
Ordinance Number 4168, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, adopting a master plan and supporting documentation for residential plan unit development, RPUD overlay underlying general commercial B1 zoning on 0.5 acres of land generally located in 7530, 53rd Street 4, and more particularly described as Exhibit 8, which is attached here to and made a part hereof, certifying consistency with the city's adopted comprehensive plan, providing for appeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith to the extent of such conflict providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Ordinance Number P2, or Item P2, Ordinance Number 4168, Public Hearing, Second and Final Reading. This is quasi judicial. I'm opening the public hearing and turning it over to Erica Linquist.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Erica Linquist, Planning and Development Services Director. I am here today to present case number PUD 0522-00010. The request is for a residential planned unit development, an RPUD overlay, and the general commercial B1 zoning district to develop three single-family detached dwelling units. The property is located on the southwest corner of 76th Avenue and 53rd Street. The property is zoned B1 general commercial. The land use is Community Redevelopment District, CRD. The north and west portion of the property is in flood zone AE15, which is a high-risk flood zone. The remainder of the property is in flood zones X shaded and X, which are low-risk flood zones. This is the site plan showing the three different lots. The larger lot has an existing home on it, and they would like to divide up into two smaller lots there along 76th Avenue. Okay, the density, the allowable density is 15 units per acre, which would allow them to build seven lots, but three lots are proposed. The B1 requirements for lot dimensions are a lot area 15,000 square feet, lot width 100 feet, lot depth 150 feet. The proposed dimensions you can see there for the three lots. Lot 1, 9,946 square feet. The width, 87, and the depth, 113. For Lot 2, it'd be 5,318 square feet, width of 57, and a depth of 92. Lot 3, 5,070 square feet, width of 54, and a depth of 92. The B1 setback requirements for the zoning district, front yard is 20 feet, secondary front also 20 feet. The side yard is 5 feet or 10 feet if abutting residential zoning, and the rear is 15 feet. The setbacks they propose are shown here. So Lot 1, a front setback of 20 feet, side 5 feet, rear 15 feet. Lot 2, front setback 20 feet, secondary front 15, and side 5 feet. And Lot 3, front again in 20 feet. The side would be 5 feet on one side and 10 feet on the other, and the rear would be 10. So our findings are, this RPUD would include three single-family detached lots, and that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the CRA plan, and the Land Development Code. And therefore, we recommend approval of case number PUD 0522-00010. Also, the Planning and Zoning Commission on July 7th reviewed this case, and they recommended approval of this RPUD as well. Thank you, and I am here for any questions. The applicants are also here tonight.
Thank you. Any questions, Erica, by city council at this time? Seeing none. Applicant?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Robert Pergelisi with Gulf Coast Consulting, AICP Planner, 13825 Icott Boulevard, Suite 605, Clearwater. And with me tonight is Joe Kingle, the property owner. And as Erica stated, we're here for an RPUD. When I was here last month in front of the P&amp;Z, I said, "I think this is the world's smallest PUD." About a half an acre. There's one existing house on it right now that faces 53rd Street and a lot of vacant land to the north of it that fronts on 76th. And we're readjusting some lot lines, replating, to have two home sites that would face 76th Avenue. And as Erica stated, the density would allow up to seven units on this site. The only way to do that would be to do a multi-story, multi-family building, which would be incompatible with the surrounding uses. You have single-family detached to the north, single-family detached to the west. We're looking to do single-family detached to be just like them. So the owners here, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any questions.
Will these be brand-new homes that you're getting ready to build and make the place look a lot better over there?
Yeah, be brand-new homes.
Is it true that he's building houses out of culverts, and that's where it's going to be?
You'll have to ask him that.
Maybe that was a rumor I heard, maybe not right.
And Mr. Pergelisi, I think the record should reflect that you worked for him.
I was sworn, yes.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that.
I do have a question for you, Rob.
Yeah.
From the front structure of the house to the sidewalk, what's the distance?
Oh, it's over 20 feet. The sidewalk is actually out on 76th Avenue. The sidewalk's actually very close to the road. It's very close to the street. So I would say that between the front of the structure and the sidewalk, we'd probably have closer to 30, 25 to 30 feet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the owner of the property have anything additional that he would like to add? Okay. Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? I actually did call Robert and suggest that, because I had a question about the square footage of the home that is staying. It was a little confusing. I thought you had a $9,000 square foot house. So I suggested to him that you guys build them affordable so that maybe our public works, police officer, firefighter, or something could afford to buy one of those houses as a starter home. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Nobody else? I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion by Councilmember Mullins.
Yes, Mayor. I make the motion that we pass ordinance number 4168, Public Hearing, Second and Final Reading.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to Section 4, Consent Agenda.
Item C1 is to approve the reappointment of Councilwoman Patty Reed to the Suncoast Transit Authority Board of Directors with the term to expire September 30th, 2025. Item C2 is authorization for the city of Pinellas Park to accept a utility easement from Crown Land Holdings LLC for property at 6,500 U.S. Highway 19 North. Item C3 is authorization for the mayor to sign a First Amendment extension to the interlocal agreement between the city of Pinellas Park and for Pinellas for continued planning and mapping services and/or special project work. Item C4 is authorization for the city council of the city of Pinellas Park to approve a notice of intent to dispose of property which generally located at 5851 Park Boulevard and 60th Street North. Item C5 is authorization for purchase under Pinellas County bid 22-0037B for building inspection services provided by Joe Payne, Inc., DBA JPI in the yearly amount not to exceed $85,000. Item C6 is authorization for the city manager to negotiate with the firms recommended by the evaluation committee in order of preference for the deferred compensation plan consultant in response to RFP 22/001. Item C7 is authorization for the mayor to sign a letter of agreement and contract for a pedestrian and bicycle safety enforcement campaign grant with the Florida Department of Transportation. Item C8 is authorization to award bid 22/004 for the roadway safety and community mobility project, 52nd Street North and 86th Avenue North handicap ramp improvements to Central Florida Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $263,208.70. And Item C9 is authorization for city council to approve the non-advalorem assessment rule and exemptions for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and authorization for the mayor to execute the certificate of non-advalorem assessment rule. That concludes tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you. Councilwoman Patty?
Yeah. Mayor Bradbury, regarding the consent agenda, I would like to make a motion to pass, approve, or adopt whichever action is appropriate, items C1 through C9 inclusive. The next public hearing will be held council chambers on Thursday, September 15th, 2022, at 6:00 PM.
Second motion.
Motion's been made in second. Any city council have any discussions on items C1 through C9? Anybody in the audience that has any questions on items C1 through C9? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Section 5 is regular agenda. We have none of those this evening, so Vice Mayor Seville, what you got?
Nothing, Madam Mayor. Just glad to be back.
Councilwoman Reed?
I went to a really nice leadership, I can't say it now, leadership meeting, I know, right? And last night, and it was Erica and Nick were there with me. And it was really nice that of all the people that were from different cities and that, they knew them. But when they came over, they couldn't say enough nice things about working with them and our city and all of our employees. It was, I mean, it wasn't like they had to say it. They didn't even know who I was, and they were just like, "It's a pleasure." So that was, it was really nice to hear and to see, and they networked like amazing. They're going to stay with there, because I'm like, "Mm," and they showed up, and it was like magic. So I really enjoyed it, and it was really good to be with them and stuff, so.
Did you tell them you were new?
I did. I said, "Well, I'm new here. I don't know anybody, so this is good." It was nice, but, so it was a really good meeting, but it was a pleasure to hear. I always love, because our staff is amazing, so it was nice. So that's all I got.
Councilwoman Butler?
I'm kind of at a loss. Everything's good, no problems. I like our new paint scheme on our police cars, trucks. Nice dark blue.
I like the Jeep.
They haven't changed the logo on it yet, do they have it? Kind of looks like this here on the wall.
I love that.
Okay. Sounds good.
Rick just wanted that one, because that's what he got tattooed on his arm.
Yeah.
Nothing for me.
No changes.
I know a new, I know a good color up for it.
Yeah, I want a new one, I think.
Anything from our clerk's office? You? Islana?
Yeah, so I have a few things. Of course, for a full list of things going on around the city, you can always go to our website, pinellas-park.com. And then, of course, after council, we'll have a listing of all the activities going on. But just to highlight a few, we have the Forest Saturday Block Party coming up this Saturday in the Pinellas Arts Village. Then we have a holiday coming up, Labor Day, and city offices, library, the brush site and the pool will be closed in observance of that holiday. And then Pinellas Park Cleanup Day is coming, September 10th. So, you know, that really allows residents to dispose of household waste, yard trash at seven different locations around the city. So check out Facebook and our website and our Frontier Channel 21 to get all that information. And then also, same day, September 10th, Sharon Tom Jones at the pack. Tickets are almost sold out, so get them quickly. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
I will remind folks that the new season, 2023 season for the performing arts show, season tickets are available now through next Wednesday, and the best seats are, now you can walk in and pick your preferred seats.
What does season package cost like that?
It comes to just shy of $264 between the packs. So you save 20 bucks if you plan to go to every show. And then then, if you like a certain seat, it's yours for every show.
How many shows is that roughly?
There are 15 shows in the next season, so. And we're bringing in a Prince show new for this year.
Cool.
And Led Zeppelin.
Led Zeppelin, okay.
Free parking as Dan's one's out. I'd add it a minute.
This year. I don't know about next year.
We got anything exciting happening in Pwok? Nope. So, Human Resources is good. Dan? I know you're busy.
No, I'm good.
You're good. Chiefs?
Good evening. The police department will be participating in helping to keep safe the Wounded Warrior Alive Ride, which is next Thursday morning. They start at nine o'clock from OCC Roadhouse out on 49th Street, kind of wind their way through a variety of different schools in the city up to the high school, back to OCC, and then about 11:15, there'll be a second parade, if you will, a hero parade into the mainland and then back to OCC for lunch. They're expecting about 100 riders on bicycle. And then this year, they're adding about, they expect about 50 motorcycles to participate as well. So we'll do our best not to have any traffic disruptions, but they'll be out and about. And we'll be there with the fire department and Sunstar trying to keep them all safe and get everybody there in one piece. Should be a good event. Always is.
Everybody says?
Seventh, Seventh Annual, something like that.
Nothing? Nothing? Okay. Other chief, we're good? Nope? Alrighty. Well, we always have things going on in the city and the community and wonderful businesses and absolutely, absolutely amazing employees. So with that, we will say that everybody have a blessed couple of weeks till we see you again. The meeting is adjourned.